Hold the seat, seal it, seem to be filled.
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear a motion come out of executive session?
Some movements, Chairman.
I have second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All right, any matters coming out of executive session? All right, at this time I would ask you, Solz to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation by Mr. Etheridge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Father God, we come to you again, Father, we just thank you for being our Father. We just thank you for being what you are to us each and every day and the blessings we receive from you there, Father. And Father, we just pray for those that don't know you as our Lord and Savior, but God, we, they don't know what they're missing there, Father. But anyway, Father, we just want to come to you today and thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve on this council there, Father, and Father, that we just pray that we could make the majority of people happy in Jasper County there, Father, and decisions we make, we know it's impossible, make them all happy, but Father, we just pray that the majority of them would be happy. Now, Father, we just ask that you be with us throughout this meeting tonight, lead, guide, and direct us there, Father. And Father, again, we just ask you for a safe trip home after this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I might mention that the young lady on the end has a birthday today, she's all dressed up, turns 29. The, uh, the I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Some movements, Chairman.
There of a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. There I hear a motion to approve the minutes from October 21st, October the 7th, and August the 19th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve them, except there's one correction needs to be made, October 21st. Uh, we was voting on the mobile home ordinance, and at that time, I voted against it. She had all voted in favor, but I voted against it. That correction need to be made.
Any objection to that correction or modification? Hearing none, I would ask that that be done. This time we have presentation of award to Jasper County School District Coach Jeremiah Faber. Faber?
Let me see.
Well, we will defer that till the time that, one thing about a surprise, if the honoree doesn't, is so surprised he doesn't show up. They, uh, at this time, I would open the floor to the public and recognize Jeff Foreman.
My name is Jeff Foreman, I live at 466 Shearwater Point Drive in Hardyville. Um, I come to all the Jasper County Council meeting because I live in Sun City and I'm a member of the Government and Business Affairs Committee. One of the things they do is they appoint members of the committee to attend various government and business and civic meetings and report back. A second thing that, that the committee does is that they present programs of interest to the community, uh, from, from things that happen outside the community. And so last week, last Friday, November 1st, we presented a program with, um, your county administrator, Andy Fulham, speaking to folks at Sun City. And, uh, tonight, on behalf of the Sun City Community Association, the Sun City Government and Business Affairs Committee, and for myself, I wanted to come and thank you for what was an excellent program, um, and, and served very well for the county, for the county council, and of course, for the county administrator. I'd like to tell you just a couple of things about the presentation. First of all, and I'm guessing that some, some of you already know this, a Sun City crowd can be a really tough crowd. Um, folks in Sun City are, are really nice, they're very welcoming, they're generous and giving, and they really want to be helpful and give back to the community. But the thing is, all of us come from somewhere else. And so many people in Sun City think that wherever they came from, whatever they did, and whatever it is you're talking about, where they came from, they did it better. So it's a tough crowd, a lot of times. Uh, a second thing is, and again, I, I know that you are, have had lots of opportunities to speak in public, if you go back to a time when you gave a speech and technical things went wrong, on Friday, anything that could have gone wrong technically went wrong. And the third problem, I guess, on, on Friday, was that Andy chose to speak about everybody's favorite, happy subject, paying taxes. So, uh, in spite of all that, it was, he drew a crowd of over 350 people, and, uh, his presentation was very professional, very competent, and everybody really appreciated it. Uh, he was, afterwards, everyone that I talked to specifically mentioned how much they learned from the presentation, how candid Andy was, and how responsive he was in questions and answers. I know he won an awful lot of friends for the, for the county, the council, and for himself. Um, don't get me wrong, people didn't leave there as fans of paying taxes, but they did leave as fans of Jasper County. And, um, everyone left better educated, with a real appreciation for lots of the programs and policies that you, uh, have, and I think an understanding of the strategy behind them, and also, uh, an appreciation of our taxes compared to other people's taxes. So thank you very much, thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diane Bostick.
Good evening, my name is Diane Bostick. Um, I want to, um, ask, because I know there's a lot of changes about the manufactured homes, mobile homes, um, and I want to make sure, for example, if you are doing work on your mobile home, and you're doing additions to your mobile home that's already existing, do you have to come to get, um, you know, approval or permit just to do things that's already there to like, like for example, to do enclosure, that's something that's already existed?
Um, Ms. Wagner, could you or someone on your staff answer that question? And that's, and you might send counsel a copy of whatever your answer is, because I've never known what, what amount of work triggers a, a permit, um, whether something like painting or roofing requires one or not, I, I don't know. Um, the, um, so you could educate all of us.
Sure.
Um, thank you, Ms. Bostick, for bringing that up. Morris Lawyer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board. Uh, two concerns. I went to a meeting in Hardyville, couple of days ago, about a week ago now, uh, the sheriff had this community meeting at one of the churches in Hardyville, and the concern was about all the violence in Jasper County community, Hardyville as well as Ridgeville. And, um, one of the statement he made about funding, having enough funding for additional officers that he needs. And we were concerned about that because while we are considering other luxury things of life, people are riding through the community shooting up people's houses. And so that concerned me quite a bit, and I wanted to come to the county council and share with them what I hear from young people in the community, how serious it is, when they're riding down the road, or I was at Waffle House the other night, and when we walk out, they said, "There was just another shooting down the road in that community up 336." And they said, "Oh my God, did anybody got killed?" How would you feel if that was in your community, and the shooting went on like that, and you walk out of a restaurant just having a good meal, and they said, "Oh my God, just somebody shot in my house? Was it my wife got shot, or my son, or my daughter?" These things are happening in real time, right here in Jasper County. And I've been to several board meetings and council meetings, and I haven't heard anyone say anything about that, and I asked the sheriff. I said, "Well, why don't you come to the county meeting and ask for more money?" He said, "Well, we put it in the budget, blah, blah, blah." But that, you know, I, I'm hoping I'm not putting any pressure on anyone, but I, I really don't care because lives are being lost. And when lives are being lost, I'm, I'm a person who concerned about my fellow man. And, uh, so I wanted to say that. The other thing I wanted to say, I, uh, I, I was at the last council meeting, and I noticed this is the third reading that's written on here, and the last meeting, they said that it wasn't a, um, didn't have the time to put it in the paper and, and notify everybody. And so I remember the council chairman saying that it was needed if you were going to have a reading and considered to be a qualified reading, um, by law. So I just wanted to remind the councilor, whoever, that at the last meeting, that was said by the young lady right here, I forgot the name, Ms. Wagner, that, um, she did not have a chance to put it in the paper and notified everybody, but we went on and heard what she had. And so I accept that, but I, I find it troubling to accept the fact that we are calling it a third reading when it wasn't, uh, published in the proper fashion.
That's right, on E, um, yeah, 12E on the agenda. And we'd be happy to hear from you, give you a double dip when we get there. All right. Um, Vincent Ford.
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would recognize David Cheddar for public hearing and consideration of the ordinance relative to the Claudine Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, members of the public. This is an ordinance authorizing, uh, the administrator, uh, in the future to enter into leases out at the, uh, airport. Uh, leases that we had are old and outdated, and there'll be new areas coming up. Uh, there are multiple lease templates involved, so rather than coming back to council each time for an individual lease, it allows the Airport Commission and Andy and our adminis- our, uh, airport manager out there to select the most appropriate lease for the type of thing that they're doing out there, whether it's commercial, private, or combination thereof. Um, so there, there's a template for you to approve and authorize the administrator in the future to enter into those. Um, there are multiple leases, since the last reading, there have been, uh, a couple of changes. I will say that most of them were correction of typographical and grammatical errors, renaming, uh, one from office storage and maintenance hanger lease to, uh, maintenance repair overhaul hanger lease, which is also more nomenclature than, uh, changing too much of the substance on it, and making certain that we had, uh, a key hanger lease for, uh, key hangers at the county, uh, might construct and then lease out, and a specialized commercial flying services lease, which I have to admit, I'm not quite certain exactly the parameters that Mr. Lucas is here, who, uh, whose hand was, uh, very evident in drafting this. Um, the leases have been seen by the, uh, users at the airport, they were involved in, uh, some of the parameters of making sure that, uh, they were taken into account, and there are basically two types of leases, if you will, for two different areas, one being the old area where we have existing leases, we'll be replacing leases as they come around, and then the new area on the north side, which will be opened up, which is, um, a Greenfield site where we pretty much have a, uh, a, a fresh deck of cards to deal with out there and how we put them together. Uh, Mr. Lucas, did I leave anything out in that presentation that you've? And I'm happy to try and answer any questions by deferring it to Mr. Lucas.
At this time, I'd open the public to, open the floor to the public, uh, for a public hearing regarding airport. Anybody want to be heard? Public hearing on airport leases? Anybody want to be heard on airport leases? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing to be closed. Do I hear a motion?
Some movement, Chairman. Second.
A motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Frank Edwards, public hearing on the ordinance relative to gate access.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is the, uh, second reading and, uh, public hearing tonight for the, uh, modifications we're making to the 2010 ordinance on the electronic gate entry program that the county has already in place, where we're modifying it to, uh, make it retroactive back to all other remaining existing properties. Since 2010, it's been a requirement, but we know there's some occupancies prior to 2010 that, that need to be retrofitted with this equipment, so.
Okay, and this applies to, um, gates that serve more than everybody. Isn't there a threshold number of occupants behind the gate that is supplied?
For residential, yes, sir, I do not, to be honest with you, I do not know what that number is, and then it would also be for commercial pop- properties that have gate access, remote gate access.
Okay. All right, open floor to the public, anybody want to be heard on automated gates? Hearing nothing, I declare the public hearing to be closed. Do I hear a motion?
When I make a motion, gate access problem, let's see, the second reading, gate access problem.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye. Lisa Wagner, public hearing regarding the, some corrections to the flood ordinance that we have no choice but to pass. You can give us the, the short and, the short version because we're doing it with the gun down here.
Sure, this is a public hearing, and a second reading, um, the, we just recently amended the flood, um, damage prevention ordinance to en- change some dates and include some language that was required by a theme of, but one sentence was left out that deals with reasonably safe from flooding. So that just, uh, this ordinance just needs to be amended to include that sentence.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody, I declare the public hearing open on the amendment to the flood ordinance to require buildings to be reasonably safe from flooding. Anybody, any member of the public want to be heard on the flood ordinance amendment? Hearing nothing, I declare the public hearing closed, call for a motion.
Some movement, Chairman.
Second. A motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Lisa Wagner, consideration of a ordinance to zonemap.
Um, this is zonemap amendment, the request is to have the property rezoned from residential to community commercial. It's three and a half acres, it's located at 3949 Bee's Creek Road. Um, previously in 2013, the property was rezoned from residential to rural preservation. The applicant would like to reestablish a community store to sell drinks, candy, food. Um, while the rural preservation zoning district allows a restaurant establishment, it does not allow a retail store. So on this property is a house and also a, uh, a non-residential structure. According to the 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as urban transition, which are areas of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipal limits, and considerations should be given to working with the municipality that annexed the property during development or redevelopment of the property. However, this property is not immediately adjacent to the town in Ridgeville, so annexation is not an option. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential, the adjacent land uses are residential, however, there is, um, nearby, there's a beauty salon, church, and, um, the school site on, uh, Bee's Creek Road, which isn't being used at this time, and a daycare. And as far as the traffic and access, the property is accessed by Bee's Creek Road, which is a Tulane state maintained road. Planning commission has reviewed, um, this request and recommend approval of community commercial.
Do I hear a motion?
I some movement, Chairman.
All in favor, uh, excuse me.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Lisa Wagner, all right, this is Lisa Wagner, all right, this is the mobile home ordinance you mentioned. This, this is a public hearing and a third ordinance on the mobile home, mobile home related ordinance.
Yes, sir. And at the last meeting, we had a, an additional public hearing. It was that public hearing that was not noticed because the meeting took place before the print of the newspaper. So the public hearing for tonight was noticed in the newspaper. And so that proper notice has been done. But as you're well aware, we've been working on this ordinance since May 2019. It started out as a simple amendment to limit the age of manufactured housing to twenty years, to also to require pictures for older homes to ensure they meet the habitability standards, and to confirm that only one manufactured house is allowed to own a property without subdividing. The first reading was given to the ordinance on July 1st, 2019. A public hearing was held on August 19th, 2019. The second reading was tabled at the council meeting, and the ordinance was sent back to the planning commission. Staff made numerous changes to address the public's comments as well as the county council's comments. A planning commission reviewed those changes, and they also worked on the ordinance at their September and October meetings. A second reading and additional public hearing was held at the last county council meeting, which was October 21st. The changes that were presented at the October 21st meeting include changing the definition of manufactured homes to model the state's definition. To, also, that would be Article Four of the zoning ordinance we'd be making amendment to. Then Article Six is the use table. So we would allow a second manufactured home to be placed on a property as a conditional use, and that purpose is to benefit family members only. We'd also create a family estate ordinance to address property with title issues and allow multiple structures to be located on heirs' property as a conditional use. The density table in the family estate, it reflects the density allowed in the zoning district, but it does not allow more than twelve units on a tract of land. So for instance, the residential and community commercial zones are half acre lot sizes. You could have one unit per half acre. Once, in the residential and community commercial zone, once you get up to six acres, you're maxed out at twelve units. That allows twelve units. But in rural preservation, that minimum lot size is one acre. So it would be one per acre. When you get up to twelve acres, you're maxed out at twelve units. So that means if you have twenty acres, you still only have twelve units. That is what's in the ordinance that's before you tonight. There is also an additional, an additional requirement that was added to the ordinance that clearly states if the property leaves the family, the new owner must comply with all applicable sections of the Jasper County zoning ordinance and Jasper County land development regulations as it relates to minimum lot sizes, density, setback requirements, access roads, mobile home park standards, and major or minor subdivision regulations. That's basically saying the property will need to be brought into conformance with the current regulations if it leaves the family. Article twelve-nine of the Jasper County zoning ordinance, it includes general provisions in that section. There is an age limitation for manufactured housing. Staff proposed June nineteen ninety-four. The planning commission, they recommended thirty years. The wind zone two requirement went into effect in June nineteen ninety-four. That's why staff picked that date. The planning commission felt that a move-in target is better. For example, in October, the 2020 manufactured homes are coming out. So now looking at the nineteen ninety-four, that allows twenty-six years old homes. So the June date is fixed. Planning commission said, well, thirty years, eventually it has to come back and be amended. That's the only difference we've had between the staff and the planning commission is the, the age limitation. So Article twelve-nine also outlines the permitting process, and it adds violations for anyone that moves the manufactured home without proper permits, including the mobile home transporters. That's basically my presentation. If you have questions or would like to look at any more of the ordinance, I'm happy to go through it. I just didn't know how much time you want to spend on it.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Don't get too comfortable, but at this time, we will open the floor to the public comments on this ordinance. Okay. Yes, ma'am. You, you want to say anything else? Okay.
She can get with you after.
That, that's not in the ordinance. That would be in the building license ordinance, and she's going to, you make sure she's got a number for you. We'll get you an answer on that. And I'll let, I'll make it my business to read that out at the next meeting because I think we probably all need to know where the, where the line is on that. Who else wants to be heard on? Yes, sir, Mr. Lawyer.
The concern that the persons that I've been talking to have with the manufactured home situation is that in the ordinance, you're only allowing a certain amount of homes on, on heirs' property. And when you're only allowed a certain amount of home on heirs' property, you limits person who buy a tract of land because they got four or five kids that wants to stay there. And so given the consideration of where we find ourselves financially in this county as a whole, not having major manufacturers, not having high-paying jobs, the school district probably employed more people in the county than any other place, what are our kids to do? So when we talk about, you can only put so many houses on twenty acres. You know, I got fourteen acres, and I, I, that's just what I got since I was grown to buy for my kids and leave for them. My parents have over a hundred acres that my grandfather, my great, my grandfather says that no one is to put a bill of home on this property. You can move a home on this property. And anybody in our family can move a home on that property at any place they choose to and set it up and live. You will never be landless. So no one is to cut the property, take a mortgage out on the property, anything of that sort. And so I had a big argument with one of my aunts that moved on from North Carolina, from New York. They want to cut the property because they build a home out of their pocket. And when they went, and they're of age, so if they pass, guess what's going to happen? They're going to live with their children, or they'll sell it. And then we'll lose that property that was the father's estate, grandfather's estate. They'll say that I want a place for all my family members to be able to come to should they need to. And that's what I did for my sons. I bought fourteen acres. So should they need to come back? And should my great-granddaughters need to come back, or whatever? They can come back to that fourteen acres and there. Now, I'm not going to take a lot of time, but most of us who have raised in the country, where they have big farms and places, properties such as that, understand what it means to hold on to your property, to not subdivide it, to preserve what you have for your, your children yet unborn. But because we see where we are today, we don't think about that. We think about, because people are dumping trailers in the county, we got to have new laws now to control other counties that are dumping trailers in our county. We have unenforced laws for that. We need to enforce those laws. I think we, this needs to go out to the county council. It airs property, should not be limited to how much home you can put on there. If the inspector comes out, inspector saw, inspector, we go put your deed, well, they say it can go there. A person should have the privilege to put their home there. There's no reason why the county should say to you, you can pay tax on a fifty acres, but you only put twenty houses on it. And you got three generations of kids growing up in your family. And none of them decided to go anywhere because they love Jasper County. Now you want to run them away, which most of them are going to college, other places, are never coming back. Most of our smartest and brightest kids are going other places to work. Don't come back. I see them, I see it happen every day. I follow kids from the time I've been coaching those Little League football players that lives in other cities that are doing well. Don't even desire to come back to Jasper County. That's awful when people that grew up here don't want to come back home. So if we don't give them a place to come, we don't give them a reason to come back. They're not coming back. So I just caution this count, this council. When you start putting limitations on heirs' property, family estates, you damages, you damage the value of what we take so dearly that we've worked so hard to put together for our families, for our kids. And I hope that we could look at that. I hope that we can go by the, the laws of the state, whereas when they come out to a salt test, determine whether you can put a septic tank in. If the septic tank can go in, you meet your bumper. Like you can't put houses but so close together. If you meet that, that, and that's a family member, and they're part of that family, it could be my third or fourth cousin. If they got caught up in New York, got homeless, they should be able to come back home and put a home on my property and live. And I'm asking the county to not deny that from people who don't have that kind of resource to buy and they'll stick their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawyer. Before he moves, he says, Sam? Is he open for question?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you're asking.
He wants to come up for question.
Sure. Ask him a question.
Uh, Mr. Lawyer, did you or anyone, to your knowledge, did anyone meet with Ms. Wagner and her team or the planning commission regarding the, the concerns that you have expressed here this evening?
I met with them not the last meeting, but I met with them the meeting before. You know, I, I own a transport company, so I'm out of town all the time. In fact, I took off the day just to be here. And this is my busiest season, so to answer your question, I did meet with them once, but I did not meet with them at the last meeting. However, if, if I'm aware of when the last, next meeting will be, I'll take off to meet with them and to talk about how we can probably structure that property usage where it won't take anything away from anyone that desire to do that for their family members. You know, because that, that's a major problem. I got cousins and other relatives who sometimes find themselves homeless. And, and we, we might not, we sit here like we, we, we don't know those people, but we know those people. Those, those are our family members. Those are people that we see, we grew up with in school. We, we seen through the community all these years. Come back home with no place to go. And the best thing they can do is let somebody buy them a mobile home or let somebody give them a piece of property, a fully used home or, or to try to, because you know, when you get seventeen, you, all you who have kids, all y'all kids are over seventeen. And when they got seventeen, I bet you say to them, you're grown now. Most of you, you young men, but most of you, when your kid got seventeen, you said you're grown now, you're out of school. You got to start figuring out what you're going to do with yourself. All of you said that. If you haven't, live a little bit longer.
Well.
You will. And all I'm saying to you, when we make these decisions, consider that with those people like this gentleman here who has a child, hadn't got seventeen yet. When she, he or she becomes seventeen, and he says, well, you got to figure what you're going to do with yourself. And if you want to get married, you got to get your home. I got to buy some land, too.
All right. Thank you. Some other people, but thank you. Work, work with planning commission. We, however, we changed it once, we can change it again. Yes, sir. Give us your name, please, sir.
My name is Vincent Ford. I would like to interject on what he was saying. I am a Ford. My family was here since the eighteen hundreds. I left down here in nineteen eighty-nine. I just came back, back to Cardiville, South Carolina. And people ask me, why are you going to go home? I own land. My grandmother hold, hold the heirs' property like a baby for people like, for her grandkids like me. And I grew up in Jasper County before I left. So I'm home to, to clean, the, the clean, to be the garden of heirs' property.
Your property will be the garden of yours?
I will be the garden of my heirs' property. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. I believe your grand uncle was Mr. Hines?
Yes, sir.
Prominent, total character. She was a joy to be around. Who else would like to be heard on this ordinance? Anybody else want to be heard on this ordinance? All right, I declare the public hearing closed. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question before we go to motion? Because I'm not sure I'm comfortable with everything, really, to be honest. Yeah. I've had a concern about the heirs' property. We've discussed that the thirty year, and I know in nineteen ninety-four is the, the year that they started to construct mobile homes in a, in a more sturdy fashion, you know, based on wind and, and those type things. So I'm, I'm leaning towards nineteen ninety-four just because of the safety and the integrity of the structure of a mobile home myself versus a thirty-year period. I'm always concerned about heirs' property and the ability for families to allow their next generations to be able to be there. I know we have, the example is if you own twelve acres or more, you can put one per acre. I just, the, the, the hard part about this is, is that you can't make everybody happy, but we have to make a hard decision to try to do what's right to the best of our ability, you know, in this situation. It's not an easy situation to be in to sit up here in these chairs and, and make this decision. And that's why I think I'd like to make a motion to defer the third reading until at least the next meeting to give Mr. Lawyer time to meet with the planning commission, give the planning commission time to rethink some of these things because I, I just want to get it right. I don't want to be a burden to the citizens, to the people. And, and, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we doing everything we can to get it right. And I'm not sure about doing a third reading tonight if that's what we're doing. So I'm going to make a motion, if that's appropriate. I don't know if there's any more discussion.
I'll point out just one thing before you do make your motion. What's currently on our books right now, if you have heirs' property and there's multiple structures on there, their grandfather did, and they could be replaced if you wanted to replace them, but it has to be done within the next twelve months. Once you abandon that use for twelve months or more, you would lose the ability to reuse it. So if you were to come in and apply, let's just say you have ten acres that has three, three structures on it, and you wanted to put a fourth one on, as it's written right now before this ordinance, you couldn't add anything to it. So us putting the density to allow up to twelve, depending on how many acres you have, it's a huge improvement from where we are right now. So I just wanted to make that clear, especially for the people who might not be aware of that.
Well, Lisa, if I may ask, Mr. Chairman, questions like in Mr. Lawyer's example, he's got fourteen acres, and under the new ordinance, you can add one per acre up to twelve acres, so he could have twelve homes on his property.
He can have twelve.
But at, at today's current ordinances, he would not be able to do that.
No, sir.
So the new ordinance is actually allowing families in his heirs' property situation the ability to add more homes because right now you can't.
That's true.
Okay. I'm not sure if, if Mr. Ford and Mr. Lawyer was aware of that, but I wasn't.
But if I understood you correctly, this must be done within the next twelve months. Is that correct? Otherwise.
That's for a house that's already established. If there's one already established, it is grandfathered. If there's one already established, it is grandfathered in. You would not lose the right to use that. You can replace anything that's established in the county is grandfathered in, so it can be replaced. But if you, um, abandoned the use for more than twelve months, then you would lose the ability to, um, use a non-conforming lot. We would call it non-conforming.
Mr. Chairman, can I say it another way?
Yeah, maybe you could say it better.
If you have an old mobile home that does not meet the standards current, and you move out and don't live in it for twelve months, it can be replaced, but only by a winzone two, thirty-year, whatever you choose. It would have to be brought up to the current standards, which might include its setback where it is, those types of things. But if you're not losing anything, um, other than if you move out of an old, non-conforming structure, mobile home, manufactured.
Yes, sir.
Third reading and turn around and pass it. I mean, a public hearing and turn around and pass the third reading. It's a law. It's done. We'd have to go back and take time to do anything to restructure it. But if we try to hear what people's got to say again tonight, we need to take them into consideration. If there's any objections, and we need to look at them before we do this third reading of this ordinance. And I agree with Marty that we need to table it again, bring it back next meeting or a month from now, whatever.
Okay, and that's fine, but it doesn't go back to the planning commission unless you send it back to the planning commission.
That's what I'm getting ready to say.
That's right.
We need, if you're gonna send it back to the planning commission, we need to make a motion that we are going to send it back to the planning commission. Now, we can't say for them to look at it in a week, because they may not meet.
For three weeks after that.
We need to, I would like to make a motion that it be sent back to the planning commission. And after the planning commission meets one more time and go through it with the people who have concern, bring it back to the county council.
Let me just say, I respectfully think we are letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. That we are, this is a step in the direction that everybody in the audience has, has approved, that they don't think it goes far enough, but it's a step in the direction that they are seeking. And we could pass this and make an improvement. And then the council, then the planning commission could review it and listen to the council come home. And then if there's a, another amendment, it would take us six weeks and it would be final. So I, I think, I think I'm quoting, uh, the former president when he admonished us, don't let the, the perfect be the enemy of the good. And, um, I don't know that most things we do are gonna be perfect. Um, I don't, but, but we, we can, this ordinance is an improvement in what everybody that's spoken thus far has wanted. All right, we got a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
All right, you got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back at the planning commission.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to make sure that the planning commission, you know, the two main points. Let's make sure we understand the difference between a mobile home that's constructed after nineteen ninety-four and those prior, because that's a real concern for me. Um, and then just making sure that we've covered all issues on heirs property. Understand the grandfathered part, understand that, you know, you can now put more homes on your own property based on this new ordinance, which is what we were wanting to accomplish and set some parameters, but I just want to get it right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we expect you all to go to the planning commission. And you all work if it takes you till twelve o'clock. You all need to work and work and work at it until you get what you want. Because when it comes back to this council again, whatever is there gonna be law, we gonna vote on it. So make them get it right, what you, or what you think it should be. Like Mr. Chairman said, we're not gonna be able to please everybody, but we gonna try to come as close as we can.
All right, I recognize Danny Lucas, uh, Business License Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On October twenty-second, uh, the Southern Low Country, um, Regional Board, what you call Soloco, uh, in this meeting, it talked about a need to oppose House Bill forty-four thirty-one. Uh, House Bill forty-four thirty-one is what we call the Business License Reform Act. Uh, it is currently in committee right now in the House of Representatives for the State of South Carolina, the Labor, Commerce and Industry Committee. And the reason why I'm bringing this to you is because of my experience on the municipal side when we dealt with this issue about seven years ago. And it is still, it, it resurfaces every now and then. And what happens with this is that there's a group of industry people, mostly contractors and realtors, who are really against the business license tax or the business license fee, period. And they're really trying to get rid of it. And this latest salvo is just a way to emasculate the ordinance or the, the business license, uh, tax so they can eventually get rid of it. Now, while we actually agree in principle with the process of House Bill forty-four thirty-one, uh, we actually oppose the specific language where in section three, it talks about using the, uh, gross, uh, using the net revenues as opposed to gross revenues to calculate the, the business license tax. That's the part that we, uh, disagree with. Because eventually what they're after is to get rid of the business license tax altogether. And what we want to, uh, what we want to advise you of is that if that were the case, then you have to make up that revenue through some other means or else reduce services. Now, here in the, here in Jasper County, the business license tax revenue is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of a thirty-one million dollar budget. So that's eight point eight percent of your general fund revenues. So therefore, if eventually they have their way and you wind up getting rid of the business license tax, or what we would like to say is the business license fee, then you would lose that eight point eight percent of your general fund revenue. So, uh, what I'm recommending that you do, if you, uh, are so possessed, is to send a letter to a number of organizations. Number one, if you would send a letter that's currently in committee right now to the Committee on Labor, Commerce and Industry, send a letter opposing House Bill forty-four thirty-one as it's currently drafted. Um, and if you were to send such a letter, if you were also send a copy of that letter to your House, uh, delegation or your, 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 um, your de- your delegation. And then also to the Southern Low Country, uh, Regional Board, Soloco. Uh, so I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, sir. They, and I believe you're a Soloco man too, so I'll address it to both of you. We have historically had a, a problem getting our fair share because Hilton Head in particular, demands live. Let me back up a little bit. Under the current ordinance, you get to deduct anything you pay to another jurisdiction from your bill. Hilton Head is able to somehow force everybody to pay on Hilton Head from sales made in Jasper County. Espy has always been the poster child. And we need some sort of a, a mutual agreement, how are we going to do that? And, um, if it's something delivered from Hardyville, it ought to be, and the, and the bill comes from Hardyville and the check goes to Hardyville. Hardyville ought to get that, or when I say Hardyville, I meant the lower end of Jasper County. You ought to get that revenue, not Hilton Head, because the truck unloads on Hilton Head. And right now, um, basically, we let the taxpayer decide who they're gonna pay. And that is, um, never been fairly done. So Soloco is supposed to be a sort of an alliance. And we could have a, um, a gentleman's agreement, or that may be an absolute term, a gentle person's agreement, um, the, um, that this is how we gonna do it. It would, it would be a lot easier to support.
The case that you bring up, or the example that you give, Mr. Chairman, is al- already in the existing language for the prior bill. And they propose to keep it in the language of the new bill, uh, forty-four thirty-one. So if the county council feels that way, uh, about the example that you give, then that should also be one of the examples that you use in the letter of opposition, if the council decides to do that.
Well, let, let me ask Mr. Lucas a question, if I may, please. Excuse me, but have you considered getting in touch with the author of this bill and expressing your opposition to the, to the language that's fashioned in this bill?
Well, yeah, so that's what we're asking, uh, for you to do. Uh, we don't want it to come from individual staff. We want it to come from the county council, uh, with a, with a vote of the county council. And then, uh, have the chairman execute the letter to state the language in which you, uh, would, would like for the House to understand, the changes that you would like for the House to understand. But we're asking that you write the letter opposing House Bill forty-four thirty-one as it is currently crafted. But specifically, the language in section three that moves it from calculating business license taxes on gross revenue and moving it to net revenue. We, we really do oppose that particular change. Because after, at some point, you're gonna wind up with no money at all. And the example that Chairman gives is just another way of backing that down. You know, when you give Beaufort City, uh, this amount and you give Beaufort County that amount, and then by the time you get to Jasper County, it, it doesn't have to come from Beaufort County, it could be from any county. But you, you won't have very much money left at all when you keep adding these codicils to the state law and you wind up with a very complicated document where you wind up with no money. A lot of language, but no money.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Uh, you want, excuse me, Mr. Clark, you have something?
I'm just gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we support the bill that, um, Mr. Lucas wants us to write the letter for and authorize Andy, along with the attorney, to, no, yeah, I'm opposing the bill and authorizing you, along with the attorney and Mr. Lucas, to craft the letter.
Chairman, see?
Yeah. The chairman's signature, uh, I'm gonna craft it itself.
There's already a letter, I think, in association of counties.
I'm out of order at this point without the chair pressing. I have attended at least one seminar in the last four weeks where Eric Shire, the General Counsel in this association, spoke on this, and they are preparing a draft letter for the municipalities to do that. And I'm pretty sure when I go to the November Association of State and Local Government Attorneys, they're gonna have the same thing. So I believe there is a draft letter being prepared by the associations that would provide a template for us to use and be tailored to our specific concerns, specifically the point of sale versus point of delivery problem that we have and continue to have. So if y'all could give us a few weeks to get that, um, I think it's coming to a head now prior to the legislative session in January.
That's good.
Sweet.
Got a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, Mr. Lucas, complete count committee membership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back on August nineteenth, uh, when the county council, uh, approved the two resolutions in support of the twenty-twenty census, the second resolution was for the complete count committee membership. We advise you at that point in time that we would come back later on and ask you to ratify the committee membership. And so we have provided that to you. In the original resolution, it called for eleven members of the complete count committee. But that also included membership from, uh, Hardyville as well as the town of Rizlin. Uh, they chose not to be a, uh, members of the county's complete count committee. Therefore, we would like to ask you to ratify the membership that is currently, uh, before you, but ratified at nine members as opposed to eleven members.
Okay, that's you, Johnny Davis, Janine Bostick, Karen Galston, Nadia Perez, Barbara Bartola, Franny Kitty, LaShira King, Bonnie Lawson.
Before we vote on it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Might I raise a, a question? How did we go about, um, developing this committee, Mr. Lucas?
Well, the committee membership was really, uh, done by myself. I was appointed the chair of the committee. And I looked around the county looking for people that I knew that would be aggressive and people that would be forward-thinking and hopefully could help us with this. Unfortunately, we didn't get very much participation or very much out of people in the community. I tried to explain it more than once, how and why it is that the census is so important. How and why it is that the census has been taken since seventeen ninety. How and why it is that we stand to lose money if there was an undercount in the census. They just wouldn't come forward, you know? So therefore, you will see that the committee is heavily comprised of governmental people. We have one citizen member, that's Barbara Bartola's. All right, and everybody else is from the government except for Nadia Paez, who is our Latino member. But we do have a member of the clergy, uh, who's also a member of the government. So we have, uh, four blacks, four whites and one Latino. We have three males and we have six, uh, females. Uh, most of us are fairly older, but we do have a, a millennial person, a young person on the committee, uh, Ms. LaShira King, and she's doing an outstanding job. So we done our very best to try to find a, uh, diverse and representative committee. But we just can't keep waiting around for people to come forward, and they just refuse to do so because we got a fair amount of work to do prior to April first of twenty twenty.
All right, do, do we? Could we procedurally, could we name these and, and later add two more?
Uh, yes, we could, that's the, uh, wish of the council.
Let's get these certified first.
I'm looking around, who, um, who wants to be on the census committee that actually is gonna show up and work? And let me, let me emphasize that when y'all see the census people cut, you know, grab all the kids and go out to the mailbox and make sure they count them. See if they, try to get some of them counted at least twice. The, the, that determines, you know, if you don't have kids, try to borrow some. Uh, but that determines
Your representation.
A great deal of funding formulas, but it also determines your voice in Washington and Columbia. And if there's an undercount, that dilutes your vote. And that includes, um, whether people are here legally or illegally, or whether they've served time, or, or any, a human is a human and they need to be counted, not for their sake, but for your sake. So, um, yeah, I just, please spread the word.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bronco, you wanna be appointed? Yes, sir.
Mr. Lucas, I mentioned three names to you one day. Did you contact those people?
Yes, sir, I did.
You contacted all three of them?
And one, one person said that they And one, one person said that they could serve, but they couldn't serve at all in the month of November, I know, I'm sorry, in the month of October, and maybe in the month of November and moving forward. But I haven't talked to that person in quite some time now.
Census count starts in April, right?
Well, the official day is April 1st, but there is a lot of prep work prior to then. So the official cutoff day for the census is April 1st. Now, the Census Bureau will start its national campaign of advertising television and radio in January 2020. We plan to have our message out in the community and market this thing heavily in February and March of 2020. But prior to then, we're spending all of, all of our time understanding what the census is, why the census is, and why we have trouble with people not responding to the US census. You know, people that are hard to find and hard to count. Why is it that that's the case? And then when we do understand what the case is, then we will, we will put together a local campaign that tries to reach those people where they are.
This is not a list of the actual people that's gonna be doing the surveys come April.
No, sir. The, the complete, the complete count committee's job is to publicize locally the importance of the 2020 census. But they're not census workers. They're not out there in the street going door to door, that sort of thing. They're not doing that.
So y'all have had meetings?
Yes, sir. Our first meeting was September 23rd. Our second meeting was October 14th, I believe, and the third meeting is set up for the second week of, of November.
Do you have anybody from the census coming in?
Yes, we have our local, we have our local contact who's out of the Atlanta office, Michael Kroll. Uh, we have not scheduled him to come in quite yet. We're gonna look to do that either in December or January. But let me advise you that...
Let me say one other thing, Mr. Chairman. There's been a study made in South Carolina that every head is $1,500 a year. For 10 years, that's $15,000 per head discounted. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money that we can either get or lose if we don't concentrate on this census and get it right. Our percentage last 10 years ago was 68%, am I right?
68%.
So 32% didn't get counted. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. So I encourage everybody to, encourage people to do.
There was about 16, there was about $16 billion that was allocated in the fiscal year 2015 to the state of South Carolina that was census-based, either directly on population numbers or part of a formula. So it is a lot of money.
And it also determines things like getting a, a House seat back in Jasper County one day. Right, Mr. Snead?
It could, it could.
All right. I have a motion to name these seven people to the county committee.
I make a motion that we accept the nine.
Nine that he has there.
I make a motion that we accept the nine people that you have on the list to serve on this committee at this time.
So moved.
I have a motion of second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, Kimberly Burgess.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. I'm here tonight seeking the council's acceptance of the one responsive bid for the removal of existing roof material and installation of a new roof at the emergency services building for $114,663, and also your approval for the county administrator to enter into a contract for the removal and replacement.
Make a motion we approve, Mr. Chairman?
I hear a second. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I, I, I know, Ms. Burgess, that on your, your bid sheet, you have three companies that offered a, a bid. Are you saying that only one accepted it or only one that you're recommending?
Of the three, there was only one that was considered responsive. The other two did not provide all of the information that they were required to for the bid. So, so that one...
Required according to the specifications?
According to the bid specifications, correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Frank Edwards.
Voice recorder assistant. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'd ask for your approval tonight to expend funds from the 911 Fund to replace the audio recording system in the 911 dispatch center that was damaged by the IT breach that we had with a system from Carolina Recording Systems in the amount of $41,543.77, the expenses of which for this replacement are eligible for an 80% reimbursement from the state.
All right, I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the bid for $41,543.77.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Council members' comments. I'll begin on my right with a little bit. Do we have any old business?
No.
No. Council members' comments. I'll begin on my right with Dr. Brandt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a conference in Columbia this past week, and it was extremely informative. Most of us are quite familiar with the Robert Rules of Order, and few of us are aware of the Mason and other rules of order. We had quite an informative session on Mason's Rules of Order that governs the government at large, even though I've served in the General Assembly, but we've never had a class as such as was conducted in Columbia this past week. It was an extremely informative session, and I appreciate the opportunity to be exposed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I also went to that conference and I attended that same class, but another class that we had was what is happening with economic development in South Carolina. Economic development at times has kind of slowed down. It always does during the time of presidential election. And we have slowed down as far as our prospects in Jasper County. So thank God, we, we still doing well. Also attended a conference, Beaufort Jasper OC, last week. And I tell you, a lot of meetings, I tell you that if you are, it's for older people, it's for people that's in poverty, it's for people that's in dying need of whatever to make your lifestyle better, but you have to qualify, there's certain qualifications that you have to meet. But any of you that don't know it, we have a, an office right behind the old hospital where the last tech is now, it's in that back building. So if you need to know something, or need, know somebody needs something, please send them now, and let's see if we can't hook them up with whatever they need if they qualify. There's certain qualifications. Two of them are just named. People that have emergencies, people that are in poverty, elderly people, those, those people especially, we serve. But also at that meeting, I just quoted, and one of the things I learned at that meeting was how much money you lose in the census if you don't count everybody. And I hope that next year, we won't lose that, however much money it was. The last 10 years, I hope we won't lose that much money that's coming 10 years. So $1,500 person per year is a lot of money. That's it.
Saul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had a busy past two weeks. We had our Southern Carolina Alliance Regional Board meeting with all seven counties to review some of our prospects and initiatives that we're doing and get caught up on some of the marketing trips and plans that the Southern Carolina Alliance is doing to recognize economic development here in our region. We also, last week, had a ribbon cutting at the Cypress Ridge Industrial Park for a new 50,000 square foot speculative building that we're using to market to industry, to move in and invest in our community and create jobs in that industrial tax base. We had a big crowd turnout, very nice event, had people from all over, good partners like Palmetto Electric and Hargray, Southern Carolina Alliance, that, that made that a reality for us. If you ride through Cypress Ridge Industrial Park, you see that we have several companies there now, and every year we keep building a new spec building and, and moving people in and creating jobs and industrial tax base here in our county. So we're real proud of that building. It's currently being marketed. Y'all ride by it and look at it. It's, it's, it really is super nice. So we're excited about the potential there for some job creation here in our community. Last week, we also had our Jasper Chamber Scholarship Tournament. We had 100 players, one of the best crowds we've ever had, and this raises thousands of dollars for our Chamber of Commerce to give a scholarship to a graduating senior from each of Jasper County's high schools. So we had a great turnout, and we are excited about graduation time where we get to present some scholarships to each of our high schools. So we're excited about that as well. And future date, November 21st. I've seen many of y'all here tonight attend. It's the Big Thursday Oyster Roast at the Jasper County Farmers Market that the Chamber of Commerce puts on. Mark your calendars that Thursday evening at 5:30. We'll cook probably about 55 bushels of oysters and have food and live music, some auction items, and it's a great community event. So please mark your calendars for that and contact the Chamber for any more information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing much in my classes in Columbia. Very interesting as always. The only thing I have to say, they need to get some new classes now because I keep taking the same one over and over and over and over again. And work with the Sheriff's Department, municipalities with the drop off, your prescription drugs that we had. We thought that it was very successful. If you have old medication laying around the house, we want you to get rid of it. And we still have boxes around in the county that you can drop these prescription drugs off to. If you don't know where they are, call the Sheriff's Department, call the city police department, Richland, and Hardyville, they can take. Thank you.
I have a motion, and this time I've recognized our administrator.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. I have two quick items for you. One is just a reminder concerning the Affordable House, Affordable Housing Trust Fund that you agreed to study and financially contribute toward that study through the Soloco Group. As Ms. Wagner has informed you, the next step would be the appointment of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Steering Committee. And so the county council needs to appoint two members. If you just keep that in your mind for a future meeting, we would appreciate that. Second item I have for you came out after the printing of your books, but it's good news and I will need some council action on it. Mr. Saul has mentioned the speculative building in Cypress Ridge, this is number four, spec building number four. And if you'll recall, when that project was started, we wanted to do another additional piece of work out there, which was some earthwork to fill in a ditch and figured into the budget, we probably couldn't afford that, but did invite it as an alternate to the bid. Did receive a bid alternate. The good news is that the Southern Carolina Alliance did work with Palmetto Electric, and Palmetto Electric has agreed to fund $115,000, which will take care of the work and their related professional services to get that job done through utility tax credits under the South Carolina Rural Development Act. And so I can make the change order to the contract because the contractor, MB Con, is still on site, but I would need a motion from you to empower me to accept the grant from Palmetto Electric and to execute the contract associated with that grant.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I have a motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, unless you have any other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. This time I've entertained a motion, the chair.
Make a motion, the chair.